Everybody do the cell?
Yep.
So it's pretty clear. Seven oh four, that's why I got myself one too. So it's seven oh four, we'll call me the owner. We're going everyone, we've got full board president, town administrator and record secretary as well. First on the agenda. That's a five. Yes, we've got two minutes, we've got two separate minutes here. Anybody wanna do the honors?
Sure.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from September twenty fourth, seven P M for a selectmen meeting.
Any discussion?
Um, no sir.
What was in favor?
Aye.
For a long meeting, you did a really good job Allison.
Yeah.
Thank you. I tried to cut him back.
Considering we had somebody going there.
That ain't a record, is it, setting one?
I had a few that were close to that around there.
We didn't get out till adjourned till eleven twenty.
Last Thursday?
No, last Thursday.
Last Thursday, uh, it was a marathon meeting. Yeah, I'll make a stack over here for you. Alright, I'll make a motion that we approve the selectmen's non-public session minutes from Thursday, September twenty fourth at nine P M.
I'll second those. Any discussion?
Allison.
Here and none, all those in favor? Uh, well, actually I'll do it just for the record, that those are minutes to remind everybody they are sealed.
Yep.
With no expiration date on it. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Allison. Take everything that's silver, huh, sign.
I will sir.
Yeah? So my area.
Yep.
Thank you man. Give me your hands out over there.
Yep.
Cratch down.
Yeah, I'm just like. Okay. You have a message up? Next on the agenda, Mr. Fred.
Um, thank you. I get an email from Lean, I think it was September twenty fifth, right around that day from my friend. Saying that you guys requested me to look into trying to get some surveyors about restoring some missing monuments on Goss Town Dunbarton line.
Right.
And before I get into that, I'll give you the easy part first.
It's never an easy part, is it?
We're supposed to be doing the Ware Dunbarton line this year.
Yep.
Cause it's been so many years. And Naomi, I met with Naomi Bolton, the town administrator in Ware a few weeks ago.
I went to school there.
And okay, I used to be a snowboard girl, but.
Yeah, he's been, no, no, he didn't even borrow us from us.
So anyhow, I explained to her what the deal is and everything else and she says, oh, she said, well, see if we can get somebody and they did. She emailed me today, they got one of the selectmen and I talked to him today and we have attended a date for October eighteenth to do it. Now Naomi is contacting one of the landowners that we park on every year down in Ware. And I have a phone call into a landowner in Hawkington that we have to cross their property to get to the, our common boundary corner, you know, between Hawkington, Dunbarton and Ware. Uh, I've been going there since ninety seven, so I don't think it's a problem, but anyhow, that's all set to go. The, um, um, missing boundary, Tibbetts Hill Road is also one that's been missing for years, uh, on Route thirteen. And the one that's been, when we did the pramulation in two thousand and two, Tibbetts Hill Road was there. I get pictures of it and everything else we took. And when we did it in two thousand and ten, it had been whacked and knocked over and broken. Now, I understand, I know true, it's the, when the plod went by from Goss Town, they hit it with the wing or something, it broke. So where it was laying on the ground is not known exactly where it was supposed to be. So for safekeeping, we brought it back, it's in the basement of our town hall. So whenever they go to put it back in, but it's just not a matter of putting something back.
Okay, quick question, I mean, when it was broke off, was it in the ground and snapped off at ground level, so what was it?
Yep.
So there's, there should be another piece to it somewhere in the ground.
Supposedly, but it's all been covered over because it's been re-gravelled there and everything. And so anyhow, I says, well, I, I emailed Sudaruso, the town administrator from Goss Town. To find out who would they, they usually get somebody to. And so I contacted Richard Bartlett Associates because they're the ones that put in the missing bounds and hooks of the Ware Dunbarton line back in two thousand and eight. There was two missing there since nineteen fifty nine. And also contacted Jacques Melanger and I contacted Mike, um.
Dahlberg.
Dahlberg. And, uh, his phone number has been disconnected.
Dahlberg?
Yeah, but I've found an email address for him online, I emailed him, I haven't heard anything back from, uh, um, so far from Dahlberg or from Jacques. But Jacques expressed an interest in doing this when I talked to him on the phone. Uh, I get an email today from Richard Bartlett Associates, um, says that, um. They asked some questions, uh, would the towns agree to spend some money on a set amount to simply recon at each site and do some research? Then reassess afterwards. There are so many ifs that could change the course of how things go, so it's hard to put a number on it. For Tibbetts Hill, if dimensions could be obtained from the other surveyor who located it before it was disturbed, that would have to be sometime prior to two thousand and ten. And it'll make a difference and or we can locate the base of the bound and find it to be undisturbed, then they can reset on top of it. If those two scenarios yield nothing, then we have a different problem. For Route thirteen, was there ever a bound there for sure? I looked at a few Ds and found a couple of the plans in Goss Town which are inconsistent with reference to what signifies the town line. Also, I looked at some historic U S geological survey topo maps. Nineteen twenty seven, nineteen forty nine show no bounds along the lines whatsoever. And the nineteen sixty nine map, it did not show a bound on Route thirteen at all, but showed the others near Tibbetts Hill and Snow Road. With that being said, is there a need to place one there and do we have the authority to do so? Does the legislature and the town and county officials need to be involved because that's also a county line? How does this affect the private properties along the line in question? So that's some of the questions they have. Now, I sent a copy, I found the, one of the ones we have from nineteen seventy nine, see Goss Town's the older town.
Yep.
So they're the ones responsible for doing the paperwork. So, um, I've been through the state archives.
Yep.
And there's nothing in the state archives reference any dimensions of rods or anything between the boundary markers. And this is eco east. Well, I figured it out, it's ninety seven degrees magnetic north and east. This is from nineteen seventy seven pramulation, which is in our reports. It says, uh, thence east on lot line to a stone post marked on the north side D and on the south side G. Set in the ground on the east side of the so-called Goropon Road. So that's one of the markers they would have to go back to. Thence east to a stone post marked G and D on the east side of the so-called Patty Hill Road, which is Route thirteen. So nineteen seventy seven says there was a stone marker that was there. And then, uh, east to a stone post marked G and D set erect in the ground on the south side of the road. Opposite appointment, two, two roads in the so-called Rodney First in place, which is Tibbetts Hill Road. The problem with this is, everything's vague. But nineteen seventy seven, a reference that there was a stone marker there. Nineteen eighty eight says it was missing. When I started doing it in ninety seven, first one I did of Goss Town was two thousand and two, we marked that one as missing, we couldn't find anything there. The only thing that's there is the vertical metal once entering Dunbarton entry, and they says that's not, uh, unauthorized town marker for somebody's gonna have to set points on it. So, uh, if they go to replace the one on Tibbetts Hill, they're gonna have to go between, um, Goropon Road to get some measurements to Snow Road. So if they're gonna do one, they're gonna do the exact same thing for the other one. So, um, the only thing I can suggest is maybe get into Goss Town archives and see if they have anything with any measurements on it.
Right.
Cause the state archives have nothing. Cause I've been through there, I even been through the books and go back to the seventeen hundreds when they king laid all that line. And it just says go east.
Go east.
Anyhow, that's where that stands right now, so. Right now, the only thing I've heard from is, like I said, so far it was Richard Bartlett that there were questions so far on that. Now, this all came about because somebody had a problem with sign, line of sight, I guess.
Yeah, Tibbetts.
Yep.
Oh, so they sent the letter to us and we thought it was Goss Town's problem and they sent the letter to Goss Town and they're saying, oh, it's our problem because, you know, and then. Here we are with the, the broken bound that's sitting in the town hall, like basement and.
Because there was a surveyor that, I'm gonna say, within the last seven or eight years, he did a subdivision in that area. And he was looking for that bound to set something. So I guess he had to go from way back to set the bounds. And right now, I, I took a ride over there to see if I could scrape the dirt. But since two thousand and ten, when it was, was stone and everything, now it's all grown over, full of poison ivy. It's right like a swale of the road.
Yeah.
And I had mentioned to David Pierce, the selectman chairman at the time in Goss Town, when we did that pramulation. If they reset it, why don't they reset it in the stone wall? Protect it, because you're gonna reset it to where it is, it's gonna get whacked again.
Right.
And Richard Bartlett Associates says, well, the thing to do, if you reset it to where it is, okay, maybe put ballast or something like that, a little size or something, you know. To protect it because it's granite, you hit it hard and it's gonna break. I asked them, I says, well, if they find a base, can they put a drill hole with rods in and cement it right in place?
They could, but the problem with, if they use regular steel, it rusts eventually and it'll just break the stone apart. We had that problem out here with gray stones. We had a gentleman that, that works with us on the, on the gray stones, he has a way of cementing them together.
Okay.
And it's, you know, like, brand new kind of.
Because what's in the, in the basements is thirty inch piece. So I don't know if that's enough to, cause I was talking to Richard Bartlett on the phone when he had these questions. Is that, I says, what's the depth anomaly of a monument? He says, well, the user's like three, three feet.
Yeah, I think well across line, right? Cause I don't believe.
And he says, the state user puts in a four foot. So anyhow, that's where that stands right now, I have no definite answer for what we can do over there. But I was telling Lean to me, the, I took, I came up the other day from Tibbetts Hill, from medical call we were on. And, okay, I, I can stop looking around, but if that corner's brushed back. Matter of fact, there's a picture that this particular person sent, cause she sent me a copy of it, it shows that. There's a thirty mile an hour sign on Blackwood Road. There's a tree about that big behind it. If that stuff was brushed up back there, I think that might have been, eliminate ninety percent of the problem. You know? Instead of, kind of go like that because the trees are in the way. It's the same coming from Little Lane, from the other way. Cause that, I'll be in a medical call on Kimball Pond Road one day and I came back and it was looking like that, you know, cause there's two corners are brushed back.
Yeah, I go through that, that section every day on the way home, uh, both ways actually, but coming back into town.
Yep.
I approach that almost so that I'm turning right as I pull into that, cause you can't see up that road.
Yep.
And those, and the people coming up, up that road, they're not doing dirty. And, and you're, and you're cutting out there kind of blind and I, I really, I, I haven't had any close calls there, but I kind of hold my breath a little bit as I, you know, scoot out there.
Well, I, I think that would help to find the situation.
Yeah, well, the visibility would be improved if you even could see it as you approach it and you could see up that way a bit more.
Thing with doing this, doing nothing, you're just kicking a can down the road.
Right, yep, exactly. So short term, maybe that's a fix.
Yeah.
Yep.
Long term, get Goss Town to be considered.
Now, I can, I don't know if they're open, do you know if Goss Town office is open tomorrow?
I wouldn't think so, because they're a large, they're full service town.
Because, you know, if you can find any pramulation they have, it goes back years. If you had some measurements on those things.
Um, I was just gonna say, we could contact the administrator of Goss Town and see if we can get some cooperation for Fred to.
Well, they were, they were.
She is in agreement, she, her email said that it's now is the time with Goss Town and Dunbarton to split the cost of getting this done, so I don't think that would be.
Now, they had another, something else in there, cause it's a county line.
Yep.
You think the county delegation's with chipper and some bucks?
I wouldn't hold your breath.
Me neither, but you, you ran in another layer of things.
Absolutely, well, that's something we'll definitely have to probably give them a, a heads up as a courtesy and if they wanna jump in, then they can call up some cash. If not, then just they can sit back and wait.
I talked to John Swindlerus years ago and.
The old man?
Yep, and they can't answer now, so. I asked him, I says, one time I says, you pramulated that line and you, uh, signed, signed the document that it was there. I says, where is it? And he says, from what he remembers, is that when the state widened that Route thirteen from where, whatever it was before. They removed the monument and then we put it back. That's what he told me back, maybe twenty years ago, but. So I don't know if that is the case or not, because.
How long ago was all that widening, Dan?
What? I don't remember them widening since I've been in town, I've been in town going on forty three years.
Probably, uh, Route thirteen or something.
It's a town line in Goss Town. What Goss Town calls Patty Hill, we call it Stack Harvey South. There is a stone wall right there, if you look where the, uh, the vertical green line, the signs is, there's a stone wall right there. So I'm assuming right in that area is where they would have to be. But it is a straight line from the Ware corner all the way to the Hooksa corner.
Let me ask that question on the right away folks in D O T and find out when it was widened and if they did have any documentation on that monument.
Did you get the same thing on Jewett Road? There's supposed to be a monument on the right hand side of the road going into Hawkington, that's gone. But there was a drill hole on the left hand side of the road and a stone wall.
But Jewett is on a state road, so.
Well, I thought the state.
Is that a summer maintain?
I thought the state maintained in the summer.
Yeah, that'd be a summer maintenance, right?
It's a full time road.
Is it?
Oh yeah. It's a full time Jewett, Jewett Road.
No, well, not, that's state maintain.
Who maintains it, the state does? Full time?
Oh yeah.
Yeah.
Cause they were out there cutting trees when someone come down the road.
Could be, I, I don't know, every road the state has, I mean, we got, it's a little, and I know the state, you know, speaking as a D O T person, wants to get them all back to the town. Because it's costing us all kinds of time and money that we just don't have. So, but that's a fight the legislature's gonna take up.
Yeah. So anyhow, if I get any more information, I'll let you guys know, but that's what I got so far with this.
Sounds good, Fred, huh? And yeah, whatever you're gonna research and whatnot, then we can at least get, you know, which.
Yep.
A start and then maybe we can figure out what we're gonna do with Goss Town and.
I'll tell you something, uh, my son is doing this with Margaux McLaughlin Ware, ninety seven. She was a student for me too. And I'm glad it was because I know how to build the right way. And she spent two weeks up here with me, around nineteen ninety seven. Going through all our information, it was all in a shoebox. All five tons, just a pile of mess. She spent two weeks, we put everything in a separate folder. And because of that, and she gave me a copy of all the pramulations between Ware and Dunbarton, and she had copies that goes back over twenty years.
That's awesome.
And she got that because their selectmen were gonna throw the stuff out. And she said, they said, we don't need all that stuff anymore, but she grabbed it, it's all in her house. But anyhow, because of that, okay, that's when we found bounds missing where they're supposed to be and everything. Because some of that stuff goes back to the old rods, but you had some measurements there.
Okay. And we could only get that from Goss Town, wouldn't be another town. But speaking of that, I mean, just kind of, in the same vein, by my house in Twist Hill with Bowe Dunbarton, there's, um. I guess you, I would call mine, it's more like a stone and it's got a B on one side and a D on the other and it's just leaning up against a stone wall.
No, the one, the next to your house, it's in the stone wall.
No, it's up, it leans against the stone wall, it's not, not buried.
Because I repainted those engravings two thousand and twelve.
Yeah, they may have sunk in.
I can show pictures of it.
Uh, it's not deep, not very deep, I mean, it's just, I mean, I think it might have sunk in a little bit, cause I mean, I know over the course of time, as kids, we used to pull that thing out and play it.
Ah, so you never did.
As kids, I mean, I was a juvenile all the time.
But when we did it with Bowe.
Yeah.
I took and repainted those, those engravings.
Cause I know, um. Interesting, yeah, I'll go check that one. Cause I know it, it's leaning one direction or another.
Well, the one at the, I mentioned, every time we done the Hawkington line and done the Bowe line, is the corner of Bowe, Dunbarton, Hawkington. The, um, that one's leaning away, it was like kind of an L shaped piece of rock.
Yep.
And, um, some, some, uh, lots have been surveyed off of that, so I'm assuming it's in, it's all the right place, but it's leaning, that corner. But anyhow, the bottom line is, we want to do something, we can kick it down the line and somehow it's gonna bite us someday.
Well, we've hardly seen that happen with Kelsey Road, so it's.
Yeah.
I'll try that again.
So that's what I got.
So you're gonna go research Goss Town as that you plan next?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I can comprehend anything, but.
Right.
Because like I said, the state archives have nothing.
They didn't have anything.
They, when, when you do this stuff, you're supposed to do all the paperwork up and each town's supposed to get a copy. And copy sent into the state archives. Now, since I've been doing it with Margaux, what's in there now is we have GPS coordinates which you cannot use as a, we can only use the general locations. You cannot replace the, the rods and all that stuff. We have pictures, we have measurements, and it's all in the state archives since we've been doing this since ninety seven.
But with GPS coordinates as well, right?
Yep.
Yeah, they're just augmented.
Right, so when I write it up, uh, I put in there, I use, uh, you know, such and such a GPS and for general location purposes only. And then put all the original stuff.
The Ware line, have you done with any other lines besides Ware?
Hawkington.
Hawkington.
Hooksa. Bowe. And Goss Town.
Also, we have GPS coordinates for all of them, for all.
Uh, not Goss Town, the last one we did because, uh, the selectman down there did the paperwork. And he took compass bearings from six different points, but he has all that information, there were seventeen pages of that.
Yeah, I think they sent us a report, didn't they?
Yep.
Copy?
Yeah, a copy of the report.
He's got it, he's holding it.
So we can't, we can't, um, take all those compass bearings and recreate all those in the location?
I've already done it. Because, uh.
So we should be able to find out where that marker is then, if that's the case, right?
Well, a handheld GPS is only good from ten to thirty feet.
Right.
That's not gonna put you right on.
No, well, you get, you say you had all the compass bearings, I mean, we could, should be able to recreate those spots.
Yeah, but you gotta do it, uh, to be as exact on it because people's property lines are on that too.
Yeah.
You just can't say, okay, this is what we think it is. The only way you can get at it pretty easy is if we can find out where it's supposed to be digging, find the base there.
Right, that's what I mean, if we could, should be able.
If you had an idea, yeah.
Yeah, at least get you closer, you can dig around there.
Well, I have an idea where it is, because there's a stone wall and the poison ivy that kind of aims to a Snow Road. And that monument was on the roadside, it was in the, the, the soft shoulder.
Yep.
It was about that far off the asphalt.
And we'll see if we can move it next time, so it's.
Well, I mentioned it to David Pierce and he says, well, the problem is people's property lines are based on that. But seems to me you could make some type of, say, this is a reference point, the original ma- bound was so many feet from this point.
Well, you could take and put a granite bound flush, you know, or, or an iron pin, you know, right where it's supposed to be, drive it, you know, three feet in the ground or whatever. So it doesn't move, and that way they can use that as a reference point and then just locate the granite marker, for also it's protected.
Right.
So the reference point will still be there, it's just be flush so it doesn't get nailed with the following.
Right.
Just a thought.
Yep. I mean, I'm not a surveyor, but, and like you say, there's ways they can do something like that, you know?
Thank you. Got some very good questions for Fred.
Cause we're, we're scheduled to do that line October eighteenth about one o'clock in the afternoon, unless something else comes up.
Now, that was with Ware, right?
Yep.
It's a Sunday.
It's a Sunday.
Oh, it's a Sunday?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So they asked us, the selectman, when's the best time for him? He says, usually Sunday afternoons. Cause I think he's got a teenager, so soccer games, football games.
Gotcha, alright, I didn't realize that was a Sunday.
So, nothing for me?
I just wanna thank them for helping, because the office is pretty busy, but when I hear the word pramulation, I think of you.
Thanks.
Expert.
Wait, cause we're in the Wall Street Journal?
I mean, uh, I guess I do have a quick question.
Yeah.
Even though you're gonna do some research, I mean, the chances of getting that marker found this year? Chances are fifty fifty or less.
Well, the, the bottom line is, this town, Goss Town Dunbarton, when they get together.
Yeah.
How much money is it to spend?
Well, that's what I was just was wondering, because I mean, if we're gonna have to actually get a surveyor out there and spend money and such like that, um, then maybe who else to wait till, I mean, to do that in springtime and actually have it in the budget?
Oh.
That's what I'm thinking, because.
Well, that depends what Goss Town wants to do.
Right, yeah, I mean, if we, the things, I don't, usually I don't wanna do, but I mean, if things move it quickly, I mean, we'll, like I say, play it by ear, but I mean. It's gonna be months and snow's flying by the time we get some, you know, some traction here.
Unless they can get something faster. My personal opinion is to do it in the fall, cause the leaves are off the trees and everything else and it's easier to. Like when they replaced the two that were missing since nineteen fifty nine in the Kipper Dam area. They had to get stationary points, like one's on top of the Mill Sil.
Yep.
And one is the highway department in Concord, D O T, make a stationary point there.
Sticking up.
I think that's where.
Yeah, that's a little highway road, it's, it's gonna get torn down eventually.
Yeah, and also then they had to go back to monuments at least fifty years old. Cause I told them, I said, I can show you one goes back to eighteen fifty one that nobody reported since nineteen fifty five. And I said, I know where that is. And I can show you the elements, so they took those monuments and then based it on to the, the stationary points and. The, the hundred fifty thousand dollar GPSs they use, they get them in a half a cent of a year.
Yep. Usually with D O T too.
Yeah.
So do you have to actually physically walk this line? Or you just go to these?
The way the state law is written, you walk your line and you renew your bounds and everything.
Yeah.
But what you gonna do when you come to a swamp or a lake?
Right, yeah.
So we go to the monuments, to the monuments, to the monuments, okay, and then. I did with Margaux, we take it, clean them all off, repaint them all, the engraved pockets, measure them all, take pictures of them all. Because between that corner, the next one would be Goropon Road, the next one was thirteen, the next one was Snow Road and Kimball Pond Road.
Yeah.
Because you can't physically get there.
Right.
There's one in Manchester and Hooksa, it's in the middle of the Merrick River.
Okay.
That's the boundary line, huh?
Yeah, it used to be Dunbarton, bro.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we oughta get that property back earlier.
We could, yeah, we could have a port back, you know?
Yeah, we could, right on the river.
Nice. Absolutely, eventually they wouldn't mind either, cause it'd be a lot less taxes for them.
Yeah, no, we'll inherit their problems with Manchester, and back at Hillwell.
Yeah.
Possibly, but tax revenue day, we could get tax revenue day though.
Yeah, but, I'm, I'm told some of those buildings are half in Hookset. Manchester issued the building permits.
Nice.
Yeah, that's ugly.
Never mind. Yeah, we got enough problems, thanks.
Happy Saturday.
All right, bud. Thank you much, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Thanks.
I'll take a backseat.
Okay.
All righty. Well done.
Am I gonna go out of sequence and get this video taken care of?
There is one on the secret of eternal business, I don't think it was this or that.
Um, this is twelve minutes long, and.
I don't know, I didn't bring it, I didn't know.
Yeah. I asked.
Interesting.
Yeah, no signal, that's why you won't see it up there.
Yeah, I'll try.
Right, right, and I still have to, okay, that's what I don't have to do, I just have to get the light, oh, I just wanna get the mouse over here.
Still okay for next Tuesday?
Where's my mouse?
I don't know.
We went on the O'Reynco Saturday.
Something's sitting too long.
Batteries are dead.
Come on here, just tested it at seven o'clock. Of course. You've got extra batteries here?
No, I don't think the batteries are there.
That's what happened to mine, one morning, I'm wondering why I haven't got a mouse on that yet, it's the batteries and the mouse.
As soon as I close it, it'll turn on, so that's all set, I just need to get.
Yeah, I'm just kinda surprised that you don't have some sort of an image up there.
Well, you have to close it down, and then it.
Oh, is that what it does?
Yeah.
Oh.
But I can't get this mouse to work.
Well, that's true.
Is it your, um?
Um, you know what? Take, um, excuse me. Pull this gizmo out here, now try the, now try, no, try it. No?
Oh, it's for the wireless mouse?
Yeah.
It's a dongle that's called.
That's it?
No, maybe, let's try putting it back in. Nope, maybe it's been sitting too long, I mean.
It'll control, I'll believe.
Oh, let's try this.
Yeah, it seems it's maybe gone into a sleep mode.
This is no signal.
Yeah.
Oh, don't do that.
No, I wasn't turning it off.
It's only the problem at the fire station, I'm gonna try to put the.
I just checked it at seven, and it turned on.
What's happening? Yeah, I don't know, might need to reboot it.
Okay, well, decent.
Yeah, it won't even take the keystroke though, get this powered off.
Oh, well, she's pulling that, we'll go through the mailbox.
Okay.
I guess that question.
You may have to reboot it.
We got a thank you card from Chief School. There's most passing.
They're gonna have to power it off.
Power it off, that's a good way to do that.
I know. Won't break it though. When it comes back up to the city, okay.
We get the write to no request?
Yep.
Everybody wanna, wanna go on additional amount?
Okay.
Satisfied with your write to no request, would it?
I have some questions for lean on it, but it's nothing pressing.
No, we don't, looking at it right now, so.
I don't, I didn't, I briefly looked at it, so I just got it tonight, so I'll look at it a little more.
Okay. The directional warning, I've called and bid off some folks, and got, connected them with lean, and such. Directional warning for the.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yes, like. Panicker directional drilling, um, it's pricing for horizontal directional drilling services, thirty-five hundred dollar lump sum for a two-inch, basically flat, you know, scheduled, I think, forty sleeve for electrical install sixty feet in a dirt ground condition with no obstructions. Price includes mobilization, demobilization, infusion services, HDE, PE, pipe, bore, and pullback. If the use of tracer wire is indicated for your project, please notify us, be aware that HDDs best offers will be made, but we cannot guarantee it will remain intact through the adverse ground conditions, basically, so that way you can pull the wires. Um, if bore is canceled for any reason, the mobilization fee fifteen hundred is charged, pay as due upon, receive invoice, blah, blah, blah. So basically, you just gotta call Dick's sake for all that stuff.
Yeah, capital. Grace, Stone, and F three.
No, I've done a number of stuff here, it's just references and stuff. Anyway, thirty-five hundred bucks to the boy that sixty feet crossed, and so he put them on.
That does sound bad.
I guess the question is if we wanna go that route or not, to put an extra light out there for the safety of everybody.
Well, I think we need the light, I mean, that's the question. And if this gets us a better lighting pattern, it doesn't disrupt the neighborhood too much?
Doesn't look like it's worse one, I don't think so.
Yeah, I would say that we definitely wanna go this way.
Okay, this is working, so.
I don't know what though. A lot of it.
Ryan, can I do this?
Software instructional video series. Video eleven, tax rate setting. Tax rate setting workflow begins with your municipal advisor creating a tax rate. Once your advisor completes that rate, you'll receive an email indicating that you should log into the system. At that point, the rate will be visible, and you can begin to update the overlay and fund balance to reduce taxes. Once those values are finalized, you can submit the rate back to DRA, at which point, the municipal services supervisor will review the rate. Following that review, the director of the municipal property division will review your rate. Once they complete the rate, the tax rate will be set. The tax rate calculator is visible to the municipality during the municipal update, and once the tax rate has been completed.
I didn't get the first.
Now we will move over to the software to go through the municipal tax rate setting interface. Upon logging into the system, tax rates.
That's why I made it volume up, so that you could hear.
To the Department of Revenue Administration, Municipal Tax Rate Setting Software Instructional Video Series. Video eleven, tax rate setting. Tax rate setting workflow begins with your municipal advisor creating a tax rate. Once your advisor completes that rate, you'll receive an email indicating that you should log into the system. At that point, the rate will be visible, and you can begin to update the overlay and fund balance to reduce taxes. And once those values are finalized, you can submit the rate back to DRA, at which point, the municipal services supervisor will review the rate. Following that review, the director of the municipal property division will review your rate. Once they complete the rate, the tax rate will be set. The tax rate calculator is visible to the municipality during the municipal update, and once the tax rate has been completed. Now we will move over to the software to go through the municipal tax rate setting interface. Upon logging into the system, tax rates can be accessed by selecting the continue button next to the tax rate description, or by selecting the tax rate tab. You will be brought to the tax rate home, which will allow you to access the tax rate calculator or print your rate. The tax rate calculator has four primary tabs, appropriations and revenues, tax base, overlay and surplus, and information. At the bottom of each page, the tax rate table can be seen by selecting the show tax rate table link. This will provide you with the final overlay information, and a breakdown of the tax efforts, tax bases, and tax rates. The table can be minimized at any time by selecting the hide tax rate table link. The appropriations and revenues tab contains five sub-tabs, which have all the figures used to set the tax rate. It's broken down by municipal, county, local education, state education, and villages. The municipal tab contains the appropriations, net revenues, fund balance information, war service credits, overlay, and any special adjustments used. The county tab contains the net required tax effort, which is a portion value determined by PRA. The local education tab contains any local education information, including multiple local or regional school districts. Additionally, the education adequacy grant and locally retained state education tax amounts are shown. The state education tax tab contains the locally retained state education tax amount. The village tab will contain the net appropriation of any village districts associated with your municipality. The tax base tab contains the valuation information that is derived from the MS one and MS one V forms for associated villages. The values with and without utilities are shown. The overlay and surplus tab is the primary interface for municipalities interacting with the tax rate, as we will see in a few moments. This contains all the fund balance information and overlay request amounts. Note that the max allowable overlay is shown at the bottom of the table. The information tab contains vital information that pertains to your tax rate, including the amount to be retained with fund balance, and overlay adjustments to reduce your tax rate by one dollar fifty cents or ten cents. At the bottom of the page, you can find the prior year and current year tax rates, in addition to the current year rate with the old assessment information. At the bottom of each tab is the tax rate table, which can be expanded. The tax rate table contains the overlay adjustment calculations, and a full breakdown of the tax rates, including the initial tax effort, the tax base, the rate, and the final tax effort. If your municipality has associated village districts, they'll be shown in a separate table below, with their initial tax effort, tax base, rate, and final tax effort. Next, we will talk about the overlay and adjustments. The requested overlay you provided under MS four-three-four is an approximate amount used to calculate your preliminary tax rate. Through the calculation process, rounding is applied. This results in fractional pennies that must be removed from the process. Any rounding adjustments are applied to the overlay. We will walk through a simple example to illustrate the overlay adjustment process. We begin with an initial overlay of fifty-nine hundred dollars, a tax effort of seven hundred seventy-five thousand nine hundred, and a tax base of fifteen million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Feeding those values into the equation, if the tax rate equals the tax effort divided by the tax base times one hundred, we determine that our tax rate is calculated as five point zero two two zero. This rate must be rounded to the nearest hundredth of a penny. That leaves us with a tax rate of five point oh two dollars. That means that we have two thousands of a fractional penny, or a thousand. Multiplying that back out through the equation, we determine that our final tax effort becomes seven hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. This means that we have a three hundred and ten dollar reduction in our net tax effort. This reduction is applied to the overlay of fifty-nine hundred dollars, and our final overlay is now calculated as five thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. This adjustment is visible in the tax rate calculator in the overlay section above the tax rate table. There you will see the initial overlay and final overlay with the total adjustment amount. Next, we will walk through the municipal tax rate setting process. Once your advisor has created your initial rate, you will receive an email prompting you to log into the system. At this point, you'll be able to log in, view the tax rate, and update the overlay and fund balance to reduce taxes. Upon logging into the system, we can go to the tax rate tab or select the continue button. There we will see our preliminary rate, at which point we can select the printer icon to view a draft tax rate report. It suggested that you export this report to PDF and save it for your records as the initial preliminary rate set by DRA. Next, we can return to the tax rate home and select the continue button to view the tax rate calculator. Notice that we are immediately taken to the overlay and surplus tab. There we will see that we have two values which can be updated, the amount of fund balance used to reduce taxes, and the overlay. At the bottom of the page is the tax rate calculation table. Each municipality has the option to update their overlay or fund balance to reduce taxes. If you choose to do so, those options are available to you in the overlay and surplus tab. In this example, we will update the amount of fund balance used to reduce taxes. In this case, we will change it to zero, and then we'll select the calculate button, and see that our tax rate has increased by twenty-one cents as shown at the top of the page. At that point, we can also update our overlay. Here we will reduce it to fifty thousand dollars, selecting calculate again, we can see that our tax rate has now changed to twenty-four dollars and eighteen cents. We can keep working through this iterative process to better understand how the tax rate is impacted by the overlay and the fund balance to reduce taxes. You can also see that an overlay adjustment of almost seventeen thousand dollars was applied. This can indicate to us that the final overlay of thirty-three thousand dollars may be a better starting point. We will update our requested overlay to seventy-five thousand dollars. At which point, we can see that our overlay adjustment has changed. Our final overlay is closer to the fifty thousand dollars we initially updated the value to. At any point, we can scroll to the bottom of the page and select the save button to return to the tax rate home. At this point, we also have the option of running a draft tax rate report, which will reflect the changes that we just made for the overlay and fund balance to reduce taxes. Return to the tax rate calculator, we can make our final adjustments to the fund balance to reduce taxes. We can also make our final adjustments to our overlay. We can see our overlay adjustment at negative two thousand dollars. At this point, if we're happy with the calculation changes we have made, we can scroll to the bottom of the page and select the complete municipal review button. At that point, the tax rate is sent to your municipal advisor. Status has changed to a municipally reviewed rate, and you can no longer view the calculator. You can view a draft tax rate report that contains all the information you updated. Upon logging back into the system, we can see that all of our tax rate status checklist items have been completed, and the green indicator says that the tax rate has been set. We can return to our tax rate home now and log into the tax rate calculator, or print a tax rate report. Going into the tax rate calculator, we can see that all values are present, but they are no longer editable. Print our final tax rate report, we will return to the tax rate home and select the printer icon. This will allow us to see our final tax rate report, which can be exported to various formats, including PDF. Note that this report does not contain the heavy watermarking that the draft report contains. The report is four pages, on the first page, we can see the total tax rate and the year. We see the rate breakdown, villages are separated into their own table, and the tax commitment calculation. The director of municipal property signature is also present with the date the rate was finalized. Page two contains the detailed appropriations and revenue breakdown for the municipality, county, education, both local and state. Note that the appropriations and revenues are shown in separate columns. At the bottom of the page, all the MS one valuation information and MS one V valuation information provided. Page three contains the tax commitment verification, which shows the total tax commitment with a half percent high and low. Please note that your taxpayer must fill out this information and load it back into the portal through the forms and documents table on your homepage. Page four presents the requirements for semi-annual or quarterly billing, with your tax rate broken out, and any associated villages broken out. To complete the tax rate setting process, you will have to load your tax commitment, also known as the one-half percent verification, a copy of your final tax bill, and the tax warrant and summary, which may or may not be broken out as separate documents, into the forms and documents table on the homepage. Under the administrative forms tab, you will see a line for the final tax bill and the one-half percent verification form. There's also a line for your property tax warrant, if the summary is included, feel free to load it there. If your summary is separate, please load it in the line below. Thank you for watching. Thank you for watching.
Did you fall asleep?
Is that, um, so that software is online with the state?
Yep.
Can we log into it?
I can send you the link.
Do we use that today?
I can use the link.
Yeah.
Uh, what was that again?
Do we already, do we use that today?
Oh, yeah, I've been using it, this is the second year.
Oh, okay.
But now they've gotten it, um, perfected, and really trying to utilize it.
Yeah, it's, it looks pretty cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, 'cause two years ago, we used to meet with the Department of Revenue, now we don't.
Right.
Yeah, we used to meet, and then, then I did it by telephone.
Yep.
And now it's all, um...
That's because they had a lot of layoffs, because...
So, how far along are we with that?
We're just waiting for them to review our final, and I think the, the part, when I went to the class on Tuesdays, the, the biggest part that they were waiting for is the state, um, I forget what it's called, the, the school state numbers, they have like a...
Oh, stadium.
Stadium, that's it. They had, they were waiting, they were, I guess there were two counties, they were going back and forth, and they couldn't get them to commit to a number. So that was holding things up. I think the counting maybe, the numbers are in yet, but I haven't seen the person, usually get a letter and then get an email, and, so we're just waiting for those three financial pieces.
They two supplied them all the numbers?
Oh, yeah, I've done everything for us through the Board of Assessors, the MS one, um, you know, uh, the audit report, the MS five.
So we have to put in the overlay or the, uh...
We did the overlay when you were out, there's, they, what did we decide on that, was it five thousand? I forget, I don't know if I did all of that. But again, that can fluctuate, and the important thing that the auditors are stressed is that make sure that there's enough money in there to cover any potential, um, abatements. And the nice thing about our appeal process, the utility appraisers tends to work with assessments, so it's reducing, it's not giving money back out of that overlay, it's just reducing their value over a certain period.
In the future.
In the future, yeah.
So, do you have a copy of what you submitted?
Yeah, it's in my audit book. You s- I s- me, I provided them for you, um, when I went on vacation, you had that spreadsheet of the assessment and how it went down, ten thousand something, ten million dollars?
Yeah.
That happens when we have that.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't you have that worksheet where it, it sets the tax rate?
That is no longer, this is what I have worked with.
Oh, they don't do that, oh, okay, that's why they don't do that.
Yeah. Yeah, so I haven't gotten there yet. But you, you can see that there's those two, those pieces that I can play with, I can change the, what, add more from fund balance if you don't wanna keep four hundred thousand in the fund balance.
That's this one?
And then, yep, and then you can, um, change that overlay, but if you wanna keep the five thou- the five thousand dollars, then you have to play with the fund balance number to try to get it so that the fund balance stays close to that number that you wanna keep there. But they were looking at cities that need fifty thousand in that overlay to cover their abatements. We seldom get any abatements if our, you know, they're, they're small, but because there's legal ones with, um, the utility companies still pending.
Right, yeah.
You just saw one tonight, they're giving to the Board of Assessors to sign that, uh, New England Hydro is, uh, come to a, a settlement. It's gonna affect two thousand fifteen year through two thousand twenty, I think, the next five years. But it's just a reduction of assessment so that there's an impact taxes.
Right.
It's gonna be less taxes than we collect, but we're not giving them that much.
Yeah. Right, so this, this area, that's only the assessment.
That's the MS one.
You, you gonna have a worksheet on setting the tax rate? Remember, we used to have a worksheet, you wanna have one of those?
Yeah, not, no, not yet, no.
So, where did you supply them?
I supplied the MS one to those numbers there. That's the tax information, the assessment that is going to affect...
So you haven't got an email back, you have to go in and put in the overlay or the fund balance?
Correct, we haven't gotten there yet, we're not there yet.
So we're not, we're not in part two yet, we're, we're only in part one, you know, those like five...
I will, that, report that they said be, a draft report, that's what I'll be printing off for you, to show you what the preliminary tax ra- rate is gonna be, and if you are pleased with that, and then you look in, at your overlay mid-date...
But they must have more information than just this.
That's my spreadsheet, that's just mine.
Yeah, so, but I mean, but they must have all the information as far as, uh, receipts, our expenditures, and...
What I, no, what, what they...
You can't set the tax rate with just, with just this.
No, no, no. What you guys worked with, with me, was the revised revenues, remember?
Right.
Okay, that's one piece.
Right.
And then the expenditures are what was appropriated at town meeting.
Right.
So there's no changes there. They add all the warrants that passed, if some of them are coming from taxes, and then they include the revenue that we would come from CRF or from John Wigan's checkbook, and all that's part of that revenue, because our, our bottom line, when you look at that sheet, is gonna say we have a three million dollar budget, but it's not, the appropriations, you, you and I are just responsible for that provision, but they have to include all of that.
So when are they supposed to send you a...
I'll check daily.
They're gonna get their fingers out of their butt, I guess.
And I, this...
I know, but it's October first, and, you know...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Time goes by fast.
My goal in the past...
She has to be able to send all the taxing going by what?
Correct. November first.
Yeah, November first.
The thirty days. So that means she needs a, a week to stuff her envelopes, I usually try to give her two weeks, so we're under the gun now, but there's no town set it yet.
Yeah, so that's... So we have to send it...
Well, part of that's, you give her also part of the problem is the legislature and, and the governor, when they had their TIF in the VDA, so that's part of it too.
Yeah, they realize it, but wait up, she's saying we have two weeks to get the information and set the tax...
I know.
So in the next two weeks, I'll be coming before the board to say, hey, this is what I've got.
Well, what happens if we get that, you know, hypothetically say, Monday afternoon you get the email? You know, do we wanna wait till that Thursday to do it, and, you know, what?
No, she didn't call us and...
Because even this information...
We're, we wanna have a special meeting.
And that's one thing they did emphasize, is when you get that email, the longer it takes for you to upload your information, it's gonna take at least forty-eight hours after before the official tax rate comes in, and we can print our bills and check our warrant, and then move forward with the printing and stuff.
What I was driving to is, but, you know, as soon as you get that...
I could do a twenty-four hour notice of our meeting.
Right, right.
If we have to, yeah.
And then just the next day we can, we can do, it'll be a special meeting just for that, setting the tax rate.
Yeah. Yeah, last year we were fortunate, that was the first town to set the tax rate, but it's just, they're still tweaking a lot of things and trying to really use all that, um, software, not in it.
I'm sure everybody else is clowning around at the same point too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause nobody has the tax rate.
Nope, not one time yet.
Awesome, yeah.
So, I think they're, they're a little bit behind, but...
Well, that was actually quite interesting.
Yeah, it was, it really answered a lot of questions that Ted brought up, and there's links to other things through the website that Justin sent me, the one who's talking, and it's a list of instructions, video, I didn't think you guys need to see that. And then there's a help page which helps us link the manual and the help sheets to, uh, under different, so this was the one that I thought was really interesting and would answer some of the questions we had.
Interesting that's where they use our overlay to help the rounding areas.
The rounding, see, even, even the auditor couldn't answer that question, now it was like, oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I know, huh? Yeah.
That makes sense, they have, they gotta find the money somewhere, so that's where it comes from.
Because we collect it, it comes out of our pot.
Yeah.
Basically, so...
Well, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Nice, thank you.
Okay, back to work.
Yeah, what do we have?
Hit the mission, I'll...
What, what are we on last?
Um...
I hear you, um, oh, right to...
We want to...
What's the last thing in the pile that you got there?
Um...
I just wanna make sure you can...
Well, the boring, boring?
Boring.
Oh, boring, yes, you know, we ne- we never really finished that, I mean, so what's?
You do.
Hennecker, what was it?
Somebody send it to you else?
Yeah, send it to...
Hennecker Horizontal Drilling is on there.
Yeah, it's, um...
Yeah, that's what it is. And I did check with Jeff, 'cause Fred asked me to check.
Hennecker Directional Drilling.
He said there's only one other company that he's aware of, he's never done business with them, and he kinda, and he says he's not sure if they're still...
I talked to a few, oh, people that do wells and stuff like that, they've done this, and they recommend Hennecker, 'cause one, they're local, they have about the cheapest one around and do it, and the next frost one is like someplace else, and they're not sure if they're still doing it anymore either.
Right, right.
So, they're pretty much the only one in town right now.
Yeah, yeah, that's what Jeff told me.
Well, just looking at their reference list here, most of what they've done, it's all the local municipalities, but it's gas service, water mains.
Yeah.
Uh, a lot of water mains, gravity sewer, uh, water, water, and a lot of it's, the majority of it's water.
Folks I talked to, how they recommended them, you know.
Is there something we're planning on doing this year?
I would say not knowing, I mean, well, how soon we wanna get those lights out there, I mean, I'd like, you know, personally, if we're gonna do it, might as well pull the trigger as soon as possible, 'cause it's gonna get darker and darker.
Yep.
I mean, summertime's not so bad, 'cause people will leave at eight o'clock and still play it.
By the end of this month, five-thirty, we'll be dark.
Yeah.
So, all right, so, so what should we be doing, so?
Tell them, Steven?
John?
Go ahead and, oh, I mean, where are you pulling the money out to do it?
That's what we have to look at.
You have the, uh, you have that paperwork from Josh, Steve?
I do.
Um, I didn't bring it on, did I?
I think it's in the minutes.
I got it right here.
Yeah, I got it, I think it's in the minutes.
Um, I think I left it on the table, 'cause the guy, you know, got that, his plans.
Then here's the pictures. He gives us our best.